All right, like call community hold meeting for Monday, October 20th, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Gaitley.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Nedzbedz.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right, thank you. Audience comments? Anybody? Trustee comments? Item one on discussions, Steve?
Thank you. Item number one under discussion tonight is assigned variance for Gin Marshall Arts located in Chesterfield Plaza. Nathan is going to walk through their request for a larger than normal sign for that strip center.
Good evening, everyone. So first up here is Gin Marshall Arts. They recently moved to the corner unit. They used to be somewhere in the middle. They moved to the corner unit there. And the corner unit has a larger facade. It's a taller facade in that corner, taller than the rest of the facades in the center. The current sign they have up, which is that sign right there, was the sign they moved over from their existing unit. They would like to add their logo to the top area, and looks like that. The sign code for allowable square footage is one and a half feet times the length of wall that you're attached to. Because they're kind of squished in the corner, they don't have a whole lot of length, but they have a lot of height, so they have room to put the sign. But because of the code requirement, they're over the maximum square footage. So the variance is for, to add this logo, and that would bring the total square footage to 51 square feet. The standards for sign code variances are not as strict as regular zoning code variances. They're in your packet there. And one thing the staff will note is, when you're on 56, it's very far to see any of that stuff in that plaza because the right-of-way of 56 is so wide, and there's trees there. So, you know, some of the criteria for sign variances is, could it be located somewhere else to see better? The answer is not really.
I have a question. Do they have a monument sign for this location?
There is a small monument sign out there already. Again, it's not very large, and it's on the other side of this wide right-of-way, so...
It has multiple names also, so the names are small.
You probably don't rec it or remember seeing it because you don't see it very easily.
Unless you're stopped at the light going eastbound, you know, you're probably not going to see it.
So with that, the planning commission recommended approval, and the applicant is here to answer any questions if you have them.
I'm fine with it. I think it makes it look a lot better.
Yeah.
Add something to it anyway.
I agree.
Is that the appropriate proportion for the sign?
So it's roughly centered in that arch, and it is roughly the same size as the Marshall Arts letters.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with it as long as it's proportional. But if it's going to be, you know, big and obnoxious, then I think that's going to take away from the aesthetic of the strip mall.
It's shown in the proportion on this drawing, right?
Yes.
I would like to know when the tree is going to be picked up off the lawn because it has been there for quite a long time. I'm totally digressing, but I'm fine with the sign.
I had the same thought.
I mean, it's been there a very long time.
And one of them just, another one just got struck by lightning this summer. All the bark came off.
Just a thought, thank you.
It's in i-dot right-of-way. They're not so quick.
Jason, good?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, well, it'll be back next meeting for a vote, then.
All right, thank you. All right, item two, Steve?
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is another zoning issue that Nathan's going to go through. It's a map amendment and a special use for a PUD for the acres on Deer Path. Just like this last one at the board wants to move it forward, it would also go to a village board meeting for a vote, or it can come back to Cow, depending on how the board feels. This is for a property just north of Westover Road and east of Deer Path. It's a vacant property that's going to be re-subdivided into multiple lots, and Nathan's going to walk through the map amendment.
Okay, so Acres on Deer Path is located at 921 Deer Path Road, which is, if you're on Deer Path, it's the house. They had a for-sale sign in the field forever on the right-hand side. They used to also have an HVAC sign up. It's that house. The property, the property was annexed to the village by surroundment, so at some point in 2009, the village surrounded the property and it was annexed in. When property is annexed that way, it automatically becomes ER. So that's the zoning it has and has always had. It's never been a part of a subdivision. It's never been a part of another PUD, so it's not in with any of the subdivisions around it. The current proposal would be to subdivide it into six lots. So the southern portion of the property, where you see the grass here, would be subdivided into five buildable lots, and then Lot 6 would be the existing house that would remain with the current owner. The developer, Silverthorn Development, would purchase the vacant portion and create the five lots for five single-family homes. So the first thing we need to do is rezone it to E3, Estate Standard District, which would match what is around it. The Estate Standard District is 14,000 square foot lots. These lots would be almost 40, 39,000, 40,000, in that range. So it meets all the standards for the E3 district. For the five developable lots, the applicant is not asking for any code exceptions. It'll meet all the setbacks, meet all the standards. For the existing house on Lot 6, we do have to call out a front yard setback on that existing house. The front yard is 40 feet in E3, and that existing house is at 36. So we're going to call out a 35-foot front yard setback for the existing house only. Otherwise, all of the proposed new homes would meet all the zoning standards. They've worked with staff to add a sidewalk along the frontage of Deer Path to connect down to the bike path on the south side. Village Code requires anything over two acres to be done as a PUD, so we're voting on it as a map amendment and PUD. But again, for the developable lots, there's no variances being requested. There's a packet on the, in front of you, of the elevations of some of the homes. So I'll just go through a couple of them here. These are sample elevations of what they would build. So the Aspen would be the Ranch, Craftsman, Modern Farmhouse, the Ontario, and the Williamson. So very nice houses. The proposed, the planning commission voted for approval. There's a draft of the ordinance in your packet. The proposed conditions are that the driveways would all have either a turnaround or circle design, so that you don't have to back out onto Deer Path, that the sidewalk be installed, which their engineer was able to work out and is shown on the plan, and that the driveway for Lot 1, which is this one, be located as far north as possible. If it's on the south side, it's directly across from where you'd come out on Westover, and we just didn't want somebody going right through the intersection and up their driveway and in their garage. People like company, but not like that. So moving that driveway over. Those were the conditions. They've agreed to those conditions. With that, Silverthorn is here to answer any questions you may have.
I'm okay with it.
So the setback doesn't look like it's very far back in that initial drawing? So I'm not sure how there would be a turnabout.
So it just looks that way because these lots are so deep. That setback is 40-foot in the front. E3 setback is 40-foot. So these lots are...
359 feet?
Yeah. Almost 400 feet deep. So it just, it looks, it looks very close to the road, but it's not. And it would match, you know, the other houses down here in Mirador, that front Deer Path, all have that 40-foot setback. So it should line up pretty well.
To kind of go along with those other plots, was it considered to only have four homes rather than five, so that they weren't so on top of each other?
We had considered putting four homes in there initially, but it would not have been financially feasible at the price of the land. It wouldn't have worked out and made sense for it to be only four lots. We tried to make them as large as possible because it makes it easier in general. But in this case, we, we had to go with five lots for the property instead of four.
I'm surprised they didn't go with more, knowing that we had a 14,000 square foot minimum lot size, and we're doubling that now.
The houses are not going to be close.
Yeah.
No, the lots are 100-foot wide.
Right.
Right? So the lots are 100-foot wide. So what you're seeing, that inner rectangle, that's not the house. Those are the setbacks lines. So the house is much smaller than that. So they're not going to be close to each other.
The lots look like they're 109 feet wide. Is that correct?
I believe it's...
I'm looking at the flat. It's like 109.
Sorry, I don't have the diagram in front of me.
109. Yeah, I'm fine with five. Like I said, I'm surprised you don't have more.
I think to get more, you would have had to put in a street and make a little cul-de-sac or something, and the infrastructure costs for that would just very quickly eat up any reserves you had.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think they fit. They're perfect. I like it.
Yep, me too. So I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item three, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three tonight is our estimated 2025 tax levy. This is the time of year where our finance director has looked at all the CPI increases from what came out last year, and started putting together a levy for the village board to consider. If you remember, in tax lingo, the levy is the finite, the actual dollar amount that we request every year. And so with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Jason.
All right, thank you. We have a few slides we'll go through, and then get to the calculations. Just a quick refresher of the dates, key dates in the process tonight. We're going to go through the calculations. We'll bring it back for approval next meeting. That'll go to the newspaper on November 21st to notice our truth and taxation hearing. On December 1st, we'll come back with that truth and taxation and the SSA public hearings, and then we'll have approval later that night. Just a quick refresher on some of the laws and rules where we go by here with the property tax. Since the village is non-home rule, we're subject to the PTAL, or Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, which basically means that we can't raise our levy each year, basically whatever's the lesser of 5% or CPI. We've had a few years, these past, these past few years were well over 5%, but usually it's somewhere in the 2% to 3% range. We can increase an additional amount for our new construction or take the new construction allowance, which would allow us to go above the CPI number. We have historically raised the new construction allowance, whether or not we've done CPI or what level of CPI, we've usually always done new construction. And we can't defer the PTAL catch-up. So we can't say, no, we're not taking CPI this year. We'll catch it. We'll do it next year. It's basically whatever it is this year, we take it. If we don't take it, we lose it. Whereas a home rule community could say, we're going to take zeros for five or 10 years, and all of a sudden, in one year, we need an increase, so we're going to catch it all up in one year. So they can have a little more leeway of how they want to handle their levy. Just a recap of our 2024 levy, so the levy that's funding this current year now. The total extension was $2,919,034. 67% of that was for our police pension levy, and we'll get into pensions a little bit more later here. But it's, as you can see from this chart here, with the blue being the police pension levy and the red being the, just our general fund, our general levy, the police pension has contributed a lot more towards our levy than, than the general has. It's increased significantly over the years. We have, we used to be back in 2015, 34% of the total levy. Now we're up to 67%. And that's going to keep raising as we get closer to our 2040 funding number. Another piece I wanted to point out is just the insurance fund. We've kept it pretty flat around $300,000 each year, but earlier tonight, we approved that IML RMA for $421,000. So we're going to start, need to see that number increase here over the years, just to keep up with insurance increases. But just kind of looking at how the math plays out here, that just means that's less money on our general, basically that goes into our general fund. Since our pension, we usually tie that to the actuarial valuation. So the general fund is the place that kind of has to have money taken away from that. And speaking about the police pension, we just got our June 1st, 2025 valuation. As a reminder, our internal funding policy is 100% funded by 2040. The state minimum is 90% by 2040. With that, our recommended contribution has increased to $2,54,846. So this is up 98,929 or 5.1% from last year. So in just our police pension, valuation or contribution, we're going to see that go up just under $99,000. And as a reminder, we're 62.9% funded. As you can see, kind of from the chart here, we basically doubled in the last 10 years of what our contribution is. We were just under $1 million for 2018, going up to just over $2 million in current. So here are just a few terms, kind of of what we're going to be talking about tonight. First of all, the tax levy, that's the amount that we ask for. So whatever that dollar amount is, we say we want $2 million. That's the amount that we're going to expect to get, receive from the county in taxes. The equalized assessed value, the EAV, that's the value of all the property that's within the village. So basically, how we calculate our tax rate is we take how much we're asking for, divided by all the EAV within the village, and we come up with a rate. And then that rate gets applied to each individual property based on what that property gets valued at. And then it all kind of equals, comes back and equals that number that we asked for, our levy. Our tax rate history has actually gone down significantly over the past 10 years. You see, our most recent tax rate was about 33 cents per $100 of assessed value. That's actually down 29.6% or 14 cents per $100 in value over the last 10 years. The main reason for this is just because of our EAV increases. As I said, our tax levy has gone up every year, like how much are we asking for? But the number that we divide that by, our EAV, that to get our rate, has gone up 84% over the past 10 years. So that money that we're asking for is just getting spread out much more across all the various new businesses or new homes, new, new construction within the village. As I mentioned, that EAV, our total estimated EAV is 897 million. This number's preliminary right now. We got from the county. Once they kind of go through all the, all the assessments and like the appeals, I'd expect the number to come down a little bit. So it'll probably be a little under this 897 once we finally get it. The biggest portion of that is the residential, which makes up 683 million dollars of it. The EAV is up, as I mentioned, 84% over the past 10 years. As part of our EAV number for this year, this 897,000, about $9.5 million of it is made up of new construction value. So just under 6 million of residential and 3.6 million of commercial. And of that new construction, it's expected to add about $32,000 of additional tax revenue this year. As you can see from this chart, we've, we've been pretty steadily increasing in our, in our new construction value. We're down a little bit this year versus these past years. But historically, we've got anywhere from, you know, in that $30,000 to $40,000 range every year, just from new construction. And as I mentioned earlier, just regardless of what CIP number we've taken or we've increased the levy, we've generally always done the increase for new construction. So CPI has averaged about 3% over the last 10 years. We did have those years where we were well over 5% back in '22 and '23. But when you kind of average it all out, it's about 3% a year. We did not take CPI increases in 2018 and 2022 for our levy. We took zero and just did new construction on those. We did in '23 and '24, so basically the last two tax levies, we've done, we've elected to take a 2.5% CPI increase. I think in '23, we could have done 5%. So we did half of it at 2, at 2.5. And I believe last year was about 3.4, and we took the 2.5. The calculations I'm going to show you here in a minute, we have assumed, taking another 2.5, so basically three years in a row, 2.5. The maximum we could do is 2.9%. But we kind of looked, when we looked at everything and how much money that would equate to, we kind of tied it to the police pension thing. That was going up about $99,000. I think new construction in the 2.5 got us about a little over 100,000. So kind of, we, we kind of kept pace with the police pension and just assuming maybe that little extra on top of that was for the insurance increases that we're seeing. So here's the calculation of what the levy is. As I mentioned, last year's, so we start with last year's levy of the 2,919,033. We increase it 2.5% for the CPI, and we add in the new construction. So that gets us to about $3,024,200. That would be a 3.6% increase in our levy, our ask amount from last year, and that would drop our tax rate that gets applied on all the properties by about 8%. And here's just a little illustration of how that would look possibly for basically a homeowner out there. So on the up, up top here, we just took last year's tax bill or last year's rate and just assumed a $350,000 house that gets valued. What that would equal, based on last year's tax rate, we'd expect that $350,000 house to pay about $397.98 to the village in taxes. Then we just said, okay, if that same $350,000 house increased various values, so say it went up 5% this year to 367, or 7.5% to 376. So we just looked at some of the increases, then given if we increased our tax rate to 2.5 and new construction, what our tax rate would be, we'd show how much less or more that property would pay in taxes. So, you know, given the numbers here, if your $350,000 house last year is now $376,000, you actually probably pay about $2 less to the village in taxes.
I have a question. What was the percentage increase that you were looking to increase by? Was it 12.9? Or what was it?
For the, for the levy request this year?
Yeah.
It was about 3.6%.
What was that?
3.6% or basically 105,000.
That was what I was looking at. It was a couple of slides ago. I think it was like 12, 12-something.
EAV went up 12%. Our preliminary EAV went up 12% this year versus last year.
So the levy that we're requesting from the prior year is up what percentage?
About 3.6% or $105,000.
Okay. And then, taking into account all the new construction that we've had?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way that that can offset that 3.6%?
So the, the new construction is kind of, is into that, that amount. So we're adding it about $32,000 for that new construction. So that makes up part of the 3.6%. And again, we looked at, when we were kind of looking at it, we tried to look at a number that we could tie it to, as I mentioned...
I'm not talking about a one-year snapshot. I'm talking about the considerable growth we've had in the past five years, like with Lincoln Village and all of the other new construction, which has increased our overall EAVs to the point where I don't know if we need to be taking big increases more than we took the prior year when we have a bigger base now.
Yeah, so each year that we've been allowed to take new construction for all the various, whether it's Lincoln Valley or some of those, the Valley Green Opus buildings that were over there, we've taken that new construction every year as we take it. So basically, that's already into what our current ask is, is all those past years. So all we can do is take basically the new stuff that comes each year going forward.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're capped at 2.9, correct?
We're capped at 2.9.
And you're recommending 2.5?
We're capped at 2.9 plus new construction. And so we're saying 2.5 and new construction.
So you're recommending 2.5 plus new construction?
Yeah, because that's like, as I mentioned, yeah, that's, that's a number that I think that we can tie it to our police pension and our, and basically insurance increases.
And that really is maybe a few thousand dollars of cushion over the pension contribution and the insurance increase?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But if we don't raise it, can that potentially lower the max next year?
If we don't raise it, it's just basically, our starting point for next year will be, will be lower so that whatever increase we ask for will just be less, essentially each year, just compound every year into the future that however much we didn't increase it this year.
So sooner, sooner or later, we're going to have to go over 2.5%, otherwise...
I mean, there have been some years, there had, not lately, but there's some years where CPI has been 1.5%. So I mean, it's been good lately, but there have been years going, you know, back 10 years where maybe the village has only been able to raise 1% or 2% or something like this. So we've had some pretty good CPIs lately, but it's all kind of...
But we also, to that point, though, we've also taken two years where we took no increase. And I don't want to just, you know, randomly throw out 2%, 1%, 3%. I mean, I think we're positioned very well that we need to take into consideration the fact that, you know, property taxes are cumulative based on 30 different taxing bodies. So, you know, I'm always of the, I'd rather be a little bit more on the conservative side of it and say, well, we shouldn't be taking the max if we don't need to. If the max we could take is 2.9, and you're saying, well, we want to take a 2.5, we better have a good reason for taking the 2.5. We have how many thousand more homes than we had five years ago?
Jason, can you put the graph back up where it shows what the possible increase or decrease it was based on different home prices?
Oh, it's still going to potentially be a decrease.
Exactly. And well, if we don't take anything, we never get the opportunity to then take it. So this, in my opinion...
We don't need it.
We do need it. There's an increase of the pension fund contribution, and the insurance went up. It basically keeps you even for the things that we need to pay. It's not, we're not just taking it to bank it. We have obligations to pay with it. That's why, that's why we should take it.
We had an EAV which was going to offset that. Yes, we have more extensions now, but we've also had a lot more build-out and new construction, and we have a wider tax base now.
Is the point not that what is going to cost the homeowner? Because that's what I look at. What is it going to cost the homeowner in the end? And if you had a $367,000 house, it's actually going to cost you some dollars less.
Times 10 taxing bodies, if they all take the same thing.
But that's less. It's, but we're, okay, but we're talking about what we're doing here in North Aurora. We can't control what all the other taxing bodies do.
We need to go to the school board meeting if we're going to worry about how much our tax bill is going to be.
Exactly, Jason.
Because that's where 95% of it's going.
Correct. So yeah, I'm good with the 2.5.
Yeah, I'm good with a 2.5.
So can we, can we get what we usually get? Like last, the past couple of years, you gave us like a 1%, a 1.5, a 2, a 2.5?
Of what those would be? Yeah, I don't have the calculations now, but we can certainly provide those, yeah.
Yes, I'm going to pull the rest, everybody. What do you think, Mark? You good at 2.5?
Yeah, I'm good.
Todd?
I'm always on board for zero. So I would, my vote would be zero with new construction.
2.5 is good.
Okay.
I'm with 2.5.
Same. I'd like to see the numbers. I mean, we've just been given one number. Traditionally, we see four or five different sets. Why aren't we getting that now?
We only started giving multiple numbers the last two years, and it was because CPI was over 5%. And we were, we weren't going to ask for 5%, so we gave you multiple options. For the 10 prior years I was here, we always gave basically the CPI number.
I'd like to see it that way because right now, everybody's got one number in their head, and everybody's like, yeah, I'm fine with it, or no, I'm not. Instead of saying, you know, we should have some room for compromise and discussion.
Sure. I understand. The reason the 2.5 is because that is the number that we think keeps up with police pensions and insurance. It wasn't like the number was just pulled out of nowhere. We're trying to match it with our increases. Otherwise, if we don't keep funding our pension, it's going to go into the future, and it's going to cost us more.
Exactly.
Right. Anybody else want to see 1% or 1.5% or 2% or...
No, we're good.
I'm fine.
No, I think we got four in favor of the 2.5, so...
All right, I just have one more slide here. It is our special service area levies. We do have six of them that we levy for. There is going to be increases in a few of them on the Oak Hill side. If you remember, we had that 20-year payback for the pond maintenance. The number we used last year was a preliminary number, so we kind of updated that a little bit. Then we added administration fee for internal staff time, but then we reduced some pond and creek maintenance. So overall, that went up 1,006.25. Timber Oaks is a little, that one's a little hard to explain. Basically, the mowing costs had been going up more than we had been levying for a few years. So we kind of run into a situation where, when we look at that SSA, they had some negative cash that we were holding on. So essentially, what we're doing is just for a one-year period, we're increasing it $6,500, basically just to kind of zero that deficit we were out. And then basically, after next year, that goes away again. It goes right back down. So it's just a one-year catch-up, really, just to get us basically back to where it should have been. Then Pine Creek, we had some. We added $1,000 for the share in overwides woods maintenance, so that's what, the majority of that increase is. And then Willow Lakes, I just pointed that one out, just increases in mowing costs. Because for Timber Oaks, Pine Creek, and Willow Lakes, those are over 5%. So we'll have to have public hearings for those on December 1st. And then that is all I have.
On Timber Oaks, what's that breakdown per house or what? I'm just curious what that is, do you know?
I don't have that off the top of my head. Were there like 95?
There's, no, there was over 200 homes, or no, not.
200.
Like 85, I guess.
It's like 285-ish, I think, by the time we went.
That's about $148.
120?
148.
148 per house?
Well, if they have a problem, they'll be at the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Speak their minds.
Well, some of these, if they had, if they had a management association, they would be paying it to them. So it's just a matter of who they're paying it to to manage what needs to be managed.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Jason?
Nope, that's it.
All right. All right, item four, Steve, road program.
Thank you. Item number four is our 2026 proposed road program. The 2026 proposed road program goes far out to the west. And well, like, we started on the west side a little bit. Last year, did some east side, and we're going to be on the west side predominantly for the next few years. So what we did this time, knowing that we are going to be in the same basic three neighborhoods with a few other little pieces here and there, we decided to do a five-year projection, just showing you where the, these annual road programs are going to be. One of the things that's nice about that is it's going to give our building department, I know the mayor called the other day, people who call and get driveway, so someone in his neighborhood got a driveway recently. We try to catch them before they put a driveway in. We don't know the road program until October typically. So from this point on, the building department will have a map, and anyone who calls in those neighborhoods, hey, you know, you're on the road program. We just want to make sure you know, you might want to wait a year to get your driveway. Well, this, being that it's going to be in the same neighborhoods for the next few years, it should be pretty easy to catch people, so I'm hoping that works with that. Brandon's going to actually do the presentation, and Jason's going to drive it.
All right, thank you. So first, I'll start off with a little overview of our PCI scoring methodology and what those numbers mean. So 100 is a street that's in perfect condition, going down to zero where it's completely deteriorated. So when we're in the very good range, we're generally looking at cracked ceiling, which that project's actually happening right now around town. So that just kind of fills in any cracks that are letting water in and the freeze thaw cycle from deteriorating to keep it kind of in better condition for a longer period of time. Then when you get into kind of the more yellows and oranges up there is when we're looking at resurfacing those streets again. So this past year, actually this past summer, we had a consulting firm review all the streets in town. They drove their van around that had numerous cameras, like laser profiling machines to measure cracks and kind of run it through their computer software to calculate all these PCI scores. And this is something we do generally every three to five years. So this is their results from that study. So this is just looking at the east side of town. You can see where we've been in the road program for probably almost five years, kind of on the far east side, all that's still green with kind of the center of town between Randall and the river, some of that. It's been a little while since it's been paved, so it's starting to deteriorate there. And we can look at the west side of town. And again, between Randall and Orchard, we've been in some of those neighborhoods more recently. So again, they're green. And looking out far west there, that's the Remington, Tanner, Mirador areas where we're trying to be headed here the next few years for our road program. And we did start in 2025 at the far west there, which this has already been updated, incorporate that with the green there in the northwest, southwest corner there. I guess like one additional note, in addition to our road program, Orchard Gateway, which is the long east-west street there, kind of at the bottom of the screen, that's also slated to be resurfaced this upcoming year. We do have a STP grant that's covering 80% of that cost with us matching 20%. It was supposed to happen this past year, but we're still working on getting some right away from ComEd for the new traffic signal. That's a part of that project at Hanson and Orchard Gateway, so that's been kind of the hang-up on that one moving forward. But it should be going to construction this next construction season as well. So our road maintenance strategy is we use these PCI scores along with road history of when they were last paved, as well as looking at any kind of utility work that is needed in any of the subdivisions or in the streets. Obviously, if water main is due to be replaced, or there's other repairs, we're not wanting to resurface those streets until we take care of those other items as well in a few, in a project beforehand or as part of the same project. So we do adjust the pavement condition index every year. We do it in-house in the in-between years of the consultants performing it every three to five years. Ours are just more estimates where the companies have the technology and the equipment to do a more detailed analysis of our roads. And here's some results from that study this past summer. You can see our overall score for our whole system throughout town is a 67. The last time we had a firm do this was in 2021. The PCI was 68, so just one different. It was a different firm from that time to this most recent time, so there could be a little variability in kind of their equipment, subjectivity on a little bit of the scoring. But generally, we're staying pretty even, which is an indication that we're spending probably about the right amount of money on an annual basis to kind of maintain our current levels. And you can see, we have a good portion of our town is in the very good to excellent range, with there also being a good portion that's in that poor range, which is, a lot of it's attributed to kind of the development cycle in town. A lot of that poor is all the subdivisions and areas of town that were built in the early 2000s, and they're all just kind of reaching that point of needing a lot more resurfacing and maintenance all at once. We kind of have a glut of kind of roads in that range right now.
Are they in a particular area, these bad roads?
Um, a lot of them are out in like the Tanner Trails, Mirador, Remington area. We're also seeing like in the Moose Lake Estates subdivision is kind of getting into that range as well. I guess also Autumn Ridge, which is building houses right now, is kind of in that range unfortunately as well, just because of when the roads got laid out there as well. So this has like a lot of different lines going on. I guess the main thing, what it's trying to show is, which it might be hard to read all the keynotes there, it's just like the different budgets amounts and kind of how that plays into what the future scores are five years out. The green line is kind of looking at what we're currently looking at budgeting, which is around 1.9 million on average a year. So that's basically showing that our PCI score with that amount, they're projecting it to go up like one or two PCI in that timeframe over the next five years. So we're basically staying about the same. The top blue line is if you wanted to get every single street in town up to like very good condition, you'd have to spend $33 million. And then there's kind of everything in between there with if you spend no money the next five years, the bottom line, you see our PCI score is decreasing. And then there's kind of other options if you're looking at wanting to just increase it slightly or just let it go a little. Next slide. And this one's looking at the backlog, which the definition for the backlog is when they're kind of poor or below, which is 40 on the PCI scale. So right now, we're about 22% of our streets are kind of considered backlog when they kind of need maintenance soon. And with our current 1.9 million, that does drop over the next five years down to 18%. So and then it's just showing how much more funds you would need to spend or not spend depending on how much backlog you're looking to achieve there.
All right, so I'm going to jump in and do this slide. So this is the funding available for the roads. The road program is a major expenditure out of our capital projects fund. Our base revenues in the capital projects fund come to about $3.5 million annually. That's made up of our 1% non-home rule sales tax of about 2.9 million. Then we get electricity tax of about $370,000, and the natural gas tax about $195,000. Gas and electric kind of vary year to year, just depending on what rates are, how the weather is doing, but they're generally about those amounts. The non-home rule sales tax we get, we use to pay our public works facility debt. So basically about 1.25 million of that non-home rule sales tax money that comes in goes straight to paying for the debt on our, on new public works building. So that leaves us about $2.25 million of just net revenues left over for basically the road program and any other capital we're doing within the capital projects fund. We have made supplemental transfers from the general fund to the capital projects funds over the past years. For the five, past five years, it's about $12.2 million that has come into the capital projects fund from the general fund. We have used that money for various sources. So if you look at our FY25 capital projects fund ending fund balance, we actually decreased about $1.9 million from 14.5 to 12.6 million. One of the main reasons for that is we did use $2.7 million to repay off the police department debt early. And then plus in this current budget year that we're in now, we are budgeted to use about $4.5 million to finish the public works facility project. If you remember right, we, because we have made these capital projects fund transfers and from the general fund, we didn't borrow the full amount that we, that the building was going to cost. We borrowed a lesser amount. We're going to use some money on hand that we had. So we are going to see another decrease in our capital projects fund this current year. For the current road program, we funded it kind of in two places. We had a little about 1.15 million out of our capital projects fund, and then we used about $765,000 of motor fuel tax money to basically to help kind of preserve that capital projects fund balance. And over the next five years, in our kind of capital plan, we are looking at about that 1.9 million a year, thinking we do have money on hand to maintain that level.
Yeah, so looking at our projected road program here, we're showing the next four years, which those dollar amounts do average out to the 1.9 million. The red on there is showing what streets we did this past summer. So we did finish up pretty much majority of things on the east side of the river. We were initially projecting Grant Street, which is right along the river there for this next year, but we again pushed it back a year due to Aurora Packing is supposed to be installing a water main that keeps kind of getting pushed back. So they would be installing, doing some water main work in our street kind of at the south end, which is the north kind of side of their facility. So we're kind of waiting for that to be done before we would start resurfacing Grant Street. But then there are a few other little scattered streets, kind of just west of the river, that would kind of go with Grant Street when they go. And then in this kind of east half of town that we're looking at, there is a small area in 2029 that we'd start looking at, which is just south of Oak Street over there. It's a little hard to see right in there. But in 2029, we're kind of finishing up with the far out west, so we're starting to kind of move into some other areas again. And when we kind of move into that area south of Oak, we're going to probably be looking a little more closely again, because some of that area is in need of maybe some water main replacements. So kind of with the water study and everything and how all that shakes out with water main replacements, we'll be looking more into that in detail in the future years. And then move into the west half of the village in the projected road program. So in 2026, we're looking at about $2.05 million for that program. And we're kind of continuing where we left off. They're finishing kind of some of the Remington and Western Tanner Trails part of the subdivision, doing kind of two different pockets there geographically. And we're staying, we're not including the, kind of the main thoroughfares through the subdivision in this program. Just that's the route that a lot of the truck traffic's going to be having to take in order to do all the resurfacing and construction work. So we're going to leave those until after we're kind of moved through the other side streets and kind of move through the subdivision where then, where the trucks aren't having to cut across those so much. So yeah, then we just generally are moving east and leaving the thoroughfares for last, kind of the next few years out, going through Tanner Trails and then Mirador there. And to sum up for 2026, all the roads are rated poor. The average was a 34 PCI out in this area, and they have quite a bit of alligator cracking and other cracking throughout the streets, as well as a lot of kind of rutting along the curb line in this area. And with that, like $2 million, we'll get about three miles of road resurfaced in the project. That's all I have, and I guess, anyone has any questions?
I got a couple of questions. So the next three or four years, you estimated, you know, close to the 1.9 million. Are you estimating that's still going to get us three miles a year? Because I'm, you know, costs are going to keep going up.
Yeah, I mean, all that's, I guess, like a present day value.
Right, right.
So yeah, I mean, generally, probably like 3%, like inflation per year.
So 3% less of roads every year, basically?
Yeah, if we don't increase, I guess, by 3%, we're probably getting a little bit.
Yeah, so I mean, what's our total mileage that we have right now in the village, roughly?
Uh, I think like Center Lane is about, was it 70, 75 or 6?
It's close to 70.
77. That's just, that's Center Lane, so.
Sure. So I mean, if, think about if you can do, what, three miles a year, and roads are supposed to last 20 years at best?
Yeah, approximately, yeah.
You know, let's look at that. If we're doing three miles a year, we're not even in 20 years not going to be able to do all of our roads.
Sure.
And that's just holding our budget where we're at now every year. So I think we need to probably soon look at increasing this budget on an annual basis at some point. Maybe not now, I'm just saying, before we're going to get to the point where we're not even be able to have a cycle of replacing all the roads every 20, 30 years, you know?
Increase the budget to do more per year, is that what you're suggesting?
Just, I mean, just to, one, maintain what we're able to do. I mean, if we want to try to do three miles a year, the cost on that's going to keep going up.
It's piecemeal.
3% a year.
Sure.
We're going to, that means we're going to do 3% less roads every year versus needing to do more roads every year.
To stay in the same budget, yes.
Well, and needing, at some point, we're going to have to do more than three miles a year.
And we keep adding roads.
And we're going to, we're going to continue to add roads.
And that's assuming that they come underbid, then we're better off, but they may come overbid, you know?
So one of the things that we do to try to minimize the impact of this is, well, let's go back to the fact that some roads do last 20 years. Some, I mean, my road was done a few years ago, and I think it was 30 years old when it was done. So depends on how much traffic is on that road as well, so some last longer than others. But the budget, right now, the capital fund that Jason showed you, it's primarily funded by the sales tax and by our utility taxes. So to grow, we don't typically, those are the major funds that accounts for almost everything. So when we talked about the tax levy just a few minutes ago, one of the ways the tax levy helps the capital fund is we budget for a transfer every year from our general fund to our capital fund purposely to put more money into that account in case costs go up high or our sales tax drops. So we do have some money that we transfer, we budget for that every year, and we've been fortunate that we've been able to make that transfer. So that is in place right now. And to Trystine Edgert's point, yes, costs have gone up, but we've also seen stronger sales tax revenue. So as sales tax goes up, in theory, so does the revenue to the capital fund to some degree. But we are going to get to a point, there's no doubt. And when I got here, roads were about the same number of roads. We were budgeting around 1.7, and now we're at 1.9. So you're absolutely right, it is going to go up a little bit, and luckily, we've been able to weather that storm.
Anybody else?
No, we're good.
All right, thanks. No exact session, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.